Good evening, it being a little after six. I'll call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen for September 18th, 2018 to order. We're at the Senior Center on Forest Street. If you'd all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first order of business is the approval of the minutes of nine-four, 2018, our meeting at the police station. I'll entertain a motion to approve as written.
So moved, second?
Motion made, second. Any discussion to be had? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is the approval of the warrants. School warrant, I'll entertain a motion to approve school warrant number 1011 for $351,483. Debt warrant number 1012 for $540,554.42. General warrant 1013 for $96,535.6. And payroll warrant number six for $355,840.86.
So moved, second?
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next item, financial items. We have our notification of free cash that has been certified. Based upon the unaudited balance sheet submitted, the Director of Accounts for the Maskey EP certifies that the amount available in free cash as of July 1st, 2018 for the town in North Brookfield is $736,167 in the general fund. The Enterprise Fund Sewer has $492,526. And the Enterprise Fund Water has $385,074. So we'll be having a town meeting shortly to appropriate those funds into their, into different spots that we needed. So I think we needed 100 and, what, 30, 40,000, something like that?
To balance out last year.
To balance out the appropriations and the rest we can appropriate to different spots. The next is notification that Town Council is increasing their rate. It's a letter from Lauren Goldberg, President of KP Law. They're going up five dollars an hour to 190 dollars, which isn't too bad. Anybody have any opposition to that or any discussion need to be had on that?
Are we getting a bargain?
It is a pretty good, pretty good rate as far as lawyer rates go. Some old business. Jim Buzzell, One Day Legal License, is Jim here? We approved that at our last meeting at the police station, so I don't know why it was on the agenda. I just wanted to make sure.
I hope he had the paperwork to sign.
I think he, I think we signed it. I'll look into it, but I don't think he needs to come back in front of us for it anyway. So on to new business. Chris Dumphy in the North Common Street. Is Chris here? I know that might be the, that might be the hearing that's on for 6:15.
Was he at Conservation and he was going to come over to here?
I heard that he was coming here to address us and then had to go to where, so we need to move him on the agenda, so. Let's see. Get some of these other items before we get to the big one. Do them real quick. Yeah, so we have a resignation from the Sewer Commission and from the Town Beach Committee. John Farmer Jr. is resigning from both spots. So we have vacancies on spots if anybody's interested. There's a number of them if anybody's interested, so come see one of the selectmen or Leslie in the selectmen's office if you'd like to volunteer for a spot, but we have a need for Sewer Commissioner, Town Beach Representative.
We have to accept the resignation. We have to vote on it.
We have to vote to accept the resignation?
Yeah, we do.
Because we'll force him to stay if we don't accept it.
Well, it's what we do.
All right, okay. So entertain a motion to accept.
So moved, a second?
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? Anybody want to force him to stay? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, request for appointment.
We don't know why he quit, that's all.
Yeah, no. Okay, so what's the next one? Town, appointment to the Town House Committee. Do you want to read that letter?
Sure. "To the Board of Selectmen, Jay Valencourt, Chairman of the newly-formed Town House Committee, has invited me to join the group. I've worked with Jay and Joe Chenover on several North Brookfield Theatre Guild productions. Some years ago, for the 175th anniversary of the town, I assembled musicians and aspiring actors to reenact moments in history of North Brookfield's connection to George M. Cohen. At that time, I became very interested in renovating the townhouse, imagining the cultural vitality that the great hall could provide to our community. My background in arts administration as chairman of a college music department and director of a live theater has provided me with experience well-suited to the work of this committee. These positions required skills in grant writing, marketing, and fundraising, all of which are essential components in renovating a building like the townhouse. I presently serve on the local cultural council and do this because I believe that arts are an essential part of the life of every community. I am very excited about the restoration of the townhouse and revitalization of the downtown. The integration of visual and performing arts in this project will provide a unique and inviting venue for not only North Brookfield but the entire Brookfield area. Thank you for considering me to serve on this committee, Eva Brown."
I didn't entertain a motion to appoint.
So moved, is she here?
Is Eva here? No, and that was to the townhouse?
Study Committee, yeah.
The new one?
Yes.
Your Committee?
Yes.
Yep. Do you know her?
These people don't show up.
I don't, but she's been on.
A number of years? I mean, if they want, I don't particularly think they need to show up unless you had specific questions.
Only that we don't know who she is, that's all. It sounds like she's done a bunch of things.
Yeah, I don't personally know her that I know of, but if people want to volunteer, I wouldn't discourage it, but it's up to you if you want to put it off to another meeting. I will certainly entertain that and ask her to come in.
I almost think we should meet the people that we're appointing, just so we know who they are.
Okay.
Ask her to come in.
Sure.
Yeah, okay, we'll ask her to come in. All right, so I guess the motion is to push this back one week?
Please, please come in. I don't want to be a killjoy, but we don't know who she is.
Playground Committee Family Fall Fest. Anybody here from the Playground Committee? See Danny? That's what this was for?
Yeah, that's what.
That's the discussion was for?
Yeah.
Okay. So you wanted to put it off for another day?
Whenever it works best with you guys, that's what we were planning on today.
Okay.
But it was more private conversation between, like myself and you guys.
Okay, if, if you want to stay after. All right, the rest of this stuff is, well, huh? Who's here? Chris Dumphy? Is Chris here? With a PVPC?
I'm Andrew Love of the Central Mansfield Land Commission. Chris Dumphy could be here momentarily.
Okay, and that is, and that's on the North Common Project, right? And that's different from our, the CDBG block grant public hearing, right?
They're related, but I don't have any kind of information on our separate public.
So, yeah, we posted a hearing and it was published in the paper and stuff for 6:15 tonight?
Yeah.
Is that?
I'll call him right now. I just came here to kind of be a second for him.
Okay.
Because I've been a part of the North Common Project, but I'll call him right now.
All right, so nobody else is here from any of those, right?
What's the name of the call?
You see a lot of uniforms, not a lot of ties. All right, we'll step that back and get on our way. Well, let's, let's do, Fire Chief.
Good evening, how are you guys doing?
Good evening.
What I would like to do this evening, just, we've had a couple incidents that I thought would be worth mentioning and bringing out and making a point of a little bit. The fire service and EMS service does an awful lot of work in the area, and as you can see, we have other departments here and the whole, all these departments all work together as one big unit. My run cards alone go right into the second line. I've already got towns all around us coming, so it's very, we're very dependent on our mutual aid status and we thank them for that. But we had a couple incidents that I thought was worth mentioning, and we, there's been a lot of saves in the area and a lot of medical calls that are related to saves and car accidents that we know are actually saving people's lives, but we don't see it right up front. So there's, and being out here in Worcester County, this part of it, we don't get the recognition. I see some things out in the major cities that get picked up for somebody getting carried out of three feet of water and, you know, that's great publicity and all, but we do an awful lot out here that never gets recognized. And so we just want to take the opportunity to do that for these couple incidents. So I do want to say before I say anymore, thank you to everybody for all the efforts and rescues that have been made over the years, and I've been doing this since I was 17 years old, so I'm familiar with quite a few of them. With that said, we had an incident at, on a Bradshaw Street, we had a building fire there on Easter, this past Easter Sunday, and I was at the station when the call came in, smoke showing from the building, but also reported, not sure if anybody was in the building, but it was reported definitely there was animals in the building. So I left the station and called a couple communities in immediately, East Brookfield and Brookfield, to get started, and our guys got toned. But upon arrival, a next-door neighbor, Rebecca Jaguerre, I grew right up across the street in my dad's house, was right across the street from the fire, and there was heavy smoke coming from the house, but she was pretty sure that the homeowner was out of the building, not quite sure, but she said there was numerous animals in the building and dogs. So we could hear the dogs barking at that time, and Rebecca ran across the street to one porch door and managed to get it open, and I went to the front door and one dog came running out, she let out of a cage. Rebecca's not here today, so I wanted to say thank you to her. I did go to her home personally and deliver a certificate, and I'll go back and see her later for her efforts in helping with the dog. But the incident itself unfolded, it was an awful feeling, as much as we like to save lives, human lives, we know that's our priority, but we also know our pets mean an awful lot to us. I got a 170-pound Great Dane that I go everywhere with and I can't imagine being without them, so we all know how serious it is. But the, I could hear the other dogs in the house barking, and went to enter the front door and the fire was off to the left, it was pretty heavy fire there in the living room, and I could see the base of the stairs, but I couldn't get up the stairs, and I could hear the dog barking up in the stairway, so I knew he was getting, he was getting cooked. And it's an awful, awful feeling, so as people started to arrive, things started happening and the first attack line going in with a lieutenant here knocked down that fire, and a couple of our captain, Randy Dorian, and John Branscombe firefighter made entry right to the second floor, and they located the pet in a cage. The poor thing was in a cage. It stopped barking at that point, so I knew it was in trouble, and they came running out and the dog was completely out of it. So I went to touch the dog myself and he was hot, literally hot, so he had taken an awful lot of heat and smoke. And at that point, a lot of people stepped in and we actually, they actually revived the dog in the yard, and I've never really seen it as clear as that day from a dog that was that bad off. And we started making phone calls to try to get him to Tufts or anything like that, and we ended up taking him to Springfield, right, Mikey? Springfield facility. They took the cruiser, a few of these guys took the cruiser, they actually worked the dog in the back of the car, and of course, we, you know, we continued our fire attack, obviously, and another animal got out down the street. But it was really enlightening, thank God, and the homeowner was not home at the time, and we got word later that the dog was doing fine and coming around, and it was about three weeks the dog was in care at that vet clinic in Springfield, and finally the homeowner called me, he said, "I'm going to pick him up." So he had a little bit of trouble with his eyes, his eyes got burned, but it was really nice thing, so we want to kind of just give everybody that worked that fire a little something. It's, you know, so with that said.
Deputy Chief Anderson's going to read out the certificate. The certificate is a compassionate fire department award from the North Brookfield Fire Department. Hereby recognizes and thanks, starting with the Town of East Brookfield Fire Department.
East Brookfield had their European mutual aid.
For your heroic efforts to rescue the pets from 17 Bradshaw Street house fire, may your kindness serve as an example for others to emulate. Chief Joseph Hallway.
That would have been a big word to me to say.
Emulate? I practiced.
The next one is the same, but it goes to the Town of Brookfield Fire Department. And the next one is for the Town of West Brookfield Fire Department.
Thank you, guys. None of this stuff happens without everybody doing their job.
Unfortunately, a lot of guys couldn't be here tonight. They're still coming home from, from work, but we are going to read their names off, and then the guys we do read will have them come up. The first one being Captain Randy Dorian. His wife's here, so I think she should come up.
Oh, yeah.
Captain Keith Marshall.
Come on in.
Of course, without the wives, we wouldn't be able to keep up with all this stuff, so thank you very much. Right behind us, Lieutenant Patrick Curtsie. Firefighter Eric Heavy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Firefighter John Branscombe. Firefighter Ryan Hallway. Firefighter Brandon Heavy.
Do you want to take it, Eric? You want to get his?
Firefighter Tyler Trainer. Firefighter Jeremy Joyle. Firefighter James Mayo. Firefighter Chris Chase. Firefighter Avery Nye. Firefighter Gino Caramelio. Firefighter Ron Barrows.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rod. Thank you very much.
And again, on the EMS being a big part of this, Mike Sblane, North Brookfield EMS.
Yeah, these guys worked the dog in the back of the cruiser. It was Mikey, Ronnie.
Brad Yannon, NBA EMS.
Brad was there.
Carrie Rockwood, NBA EMS.
We've been carrying around a respirator for a dog, I don't know how many years, never used it.
We used it that day.
Yeah, we used it that day. So with that said, I mean, it was just a nice thing to have all happen, but you heard how many names that was, just one small incident, the fire was contained in the living room, and, you know, it did a lot of damage, but, you know, it goes to show the importance of the mutual aid, and that was an Easter Sunday, so to have that kind of help, it was really nice to have. All right, with that said, the next set of awards was, before I get started, we had, we had an incident down on, Dispatch received a call from a woman that she was having difficulty breathing, and while she was on the phone with Dispatch, she no longer was speaking to Dispatch, so we knew something went terribly wrong. The tones, the tones went out, and the police department responded along with EMS and fire to find this woman in a full code in her bedroom. The location was a very difficult location, it was a very tough driveway, a little bit older home, and it wasn't an easy extrication to get the individual out. But with that said, you know, I started my EMT in 1976. I've done CPR good many times with all these people. I want to give a chance for Pete Martel and Mr. LaFleur, Get Up and Speak. They've been, they've been in the industry in the paramedic division for years and years. They're pioneers out here. They've done a lot for the, these communities. They're going to tell you that saves in CPR are pretty limited. We've had people live 12 hours, 24 hours, and, you know, God bless, they have brain damage and everything else, but what's kind of considered a save is when somebody actually comes home and they're, they're living their lives with full throttle. So this happened as a result. So before we go into the awards themselves, I wanted to let Pete and Donna, who we have a great respect for in the EMS and fire industry, say a few words about some of the equipment and, and some of their experience with CPR. Donna LaFleur, Pete Martel? Make yourselves at home.
We've had a great working relationship on the EMS side with North Brookfield for years and years going back. I mean, I remember fond memories with Rich Neidam and, you know, going back and all our guys up until the current leadership, and that just manifests to where we are today. That was a very interesting call. According to the dispatcher, the patient actually was able to say the word asthma. Yet she collapsed, and when North Brookfield units got there, the police said she was in cardiac arrest, and very often that's not a survivable thing in 30 years. I've only had a couple saves. This was just from, it was a good teamwork, it was a difficult drive, it was difficult to set a stairway just to get the patient out of the house, but it all starts with, with the early steps. Lieutenant, would you, I know Mr. Early was there from West Brookfield, but the law enforcement side, they get right in there, they get the semi-automatic fibrillators on there, they start CPR. That moves back, EMS shows up, they continue the CPR. Fire, they're just fix-it people, so it's how are we going to get this patient down these stairs, down this driveway? And this all just click, 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 and it's just worked out. We actually got pulses back on the patient before we left the scene and maintained them the entire way to the hospital while still working, and we got word back from Maryland Hospital a day or two later, patient would have been transferred to Bay State, was conscious, no memory of the incident, but no adverse effects after the fact. I did want to throw one bullet plug in, this, we were fortunate enough in Brookfield to get this a few years ago. It's a CPR machine, the CPR machines were out, they started coming out about the time Sam Dunn, Don and Joseph started in the field. They've come a long way since. We've been fortunate enough through donations, some fundraising to get one. You guys?
Not yet.
Not yet, but if I could throw a plug, unfortunately, it's $15,000, but it's, anybody in this room that's done CPR, you can't use a seatbelt, you can't hold on, you're yelling out every left turn, right turn, you're holding on for dear life. This?
Worth its weight in gold.
Put the patient on this, get it going, and it does it, and it does it at the right, the right depth, and there's no interruption. So instead of having three, four-plus people borrowing law enforcement to drive, borrowing firefighters to drive the vehicle, it really streamlines the whole thing. So if there's any kind of plug, grassroots donation for that, targeted donations from townspeople, North Brookfield'd be an incredible asset to them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So right along from the dispatchers getting us out fast, that started the whole ball rolling, so it's the whole team.
It's a whole team effort, absolutely.
It is. I've been doing this for 42 years, and we've worked a lot with the surrounding Brookfields, and we've always helped each other. Whenever you have, need someone, they're always willing to come in to help you, and we're willing to help them, so that's how we keep small towns going with the highest quality of care that we can.
Yeah, when you're looking at the full, full picture, you're looking at like 18,000 people plus visitors, so when you've got four communities working as tight as we are, we have our hands full, and if anybody thinks, "Oh, it's a small town, there's nothing going on," you got another thing coming. So with that said.
There's also one thing. I, one thing that people don't know is that while we were working on the patient, the fire department was propping up this porch outside because with all the weight from the people on the stairs and on the porch, it was kind of leaning down, so.
Not because I was up.
So he was, he was running around grabbing wood and propping it up, and so.
Yeah, a lot of eyes go into it, and the Lieutenant Daley and Patrick Coristy were the first ones to get to the, the individual and start the proper procedures to save this person's life. And it all started, like she said, back at Dispatch. Dispatch is really a professional agency, works up out of the state police barracks, and I've, I can't say enough. To throw a plug at the police department, they're out on the road, so God, when I hear somebody say, "Oh, we don't need a night shift," I want to, I want to kill them. They have no idea the importance of what's going on out there at night, and just for myself to go to a fire, it saves so much time because for one, I struggle to see at night, and to have them on scene, pen that house for me already, that's huge, just takes a load off me because I can get things going. All the past chiefs will tell you how important that is, to say, "Hey, they're out of the building, we know that." There's so much ahead of us being out on the field, so that, that's a critical service that's being done out here with the police department. So Donna, Pete, anything else you'd like to add? Patrick, the Director of EMS in North Brookfield, anything you'd like to say before we end up this?
I just wanted to say it was a great team effort, it really was. It was a unique situation, and it doesn't happen every day. If this was in Boston, it would have been on Channel 5 news that night. Out here, it's just another thing that we do that doesn't necessarily get seen, and I think everybody that participated that day did an amazing job. It's from Dispatch all the way down to the receiving doctors at Maryland Hospital. I think it was a tremendous. I think it was a tremendous success. And the results are, a woman's home today with her family when she shouldn't be.
Yeah, and just let me reiterate, this, this isn't the first time. There's been a lot of saves for different, different things that have happened over the years. Yeah, we did. And so I don't want to take any credit away from anybody for the past and the future, but to recognize a few and get people aware of it, I think is very important. And my own, just personally, at my age as being a fire chief now, and I'm blessed to be that, and have great friends, it's just, I thank you all for being there and doing what you do with me and helping us out. So Pat, who'd you want?
North Brookfield Fire and EMS Life Saving Award is hereby presented to Chief Joseph F. Hallway, North Brookfield Fire. In recognition of your courageous actions during an emergency situation, you came to the aid of a fellow UMD with dedication and diligence.
Oh, thanks, Pat.
Thank you. To Deputy Chief Darren Anderson, North Brookfield Fire Department.
I'll read this one for him. Patrick Kersey, North Brookfield EMS.
These are everybody that was at this scene that day, and not discounting 911.
To Ryan Daley, North Brookfield Police Department. To Peter Martel, Brookfield EMS. To Donna LaFleur, Brookfield EMS. To Keith Marshall, North Brookfield EMS. To Alexis Andakin, North Brookfield EMS. To Michael Spleen, North Brookfield EMS. To Lieutenant Thomas Basset, North Brookfield Fire Department.
I'll take it. Good job.
To James Early, West Brookfield Police Department.
Okay, so that's what we have for presentations, and we thank you for your, your time, but you can see it takes an awful lot of people to make things happen. And there's even more people who are not even mentioned, just in that one incident with the woman that was in cardiac arrest, so. You, Bobby, could count in between Dispatches that 15 to 20 people, never mind, I don't know how many they had in the ER set up, so it, it's quite a process. We thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to say to all the emergency services personnel in the room today, thank you on behalf of the citizens of North Brookfield. You do an amazing job. Time away from families for sometimes very little pay and very little recognition, so this is just a small little thing to show you how appreciative we are of what you do day in and day out, so thank you all very much. Okay. So Chris, you got another thing to get to tonight, right? So we gotta, we'll do you now, so if you come up, we'll do you. North Common Street, how, how many things do we have on the agenda with you tonight?
Andrew, my question is. First of all, I apologize for my tardiness, but I was just thanked for my tardiness by some of your troops. So anyways, my name is Christopher Dunphy, I'm with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, assisted the town of North Brookfield in writing a grant through the Department of Housing and Community Development's Block Grant Program. Funding through that program is providing for comprehensive improvements to North Common Street, just down the road here. Andrew Lowe was instrumental in starting this project a few years ago, and writing a, a planning project and subsequent design projects. Andrew is presently with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. So collectively, our two commissions have been working with North Brookfield to try and advance funding to the town through this program. We'll continue to do our best in that regard. Now, part of the program requires that we come out here in a public forum to provide, you know, provide an opportunity for comment on the ongoing activities. So the ongoing activity is the improvement of North Common Street. And I, I just want to commend the town and its departments, and particularly the, the Water Department, the sewer, and the highway for contributing and making sure this goes as smoothly as possible. As you can imagine, when you get into these old neighborhoods, there's lots of unknowns, lots of things that you thought were there that are not there, and things that are there that you didn't think were there. So with your, help from your departments, we've been able to identify a lot of these subsurface infrastructure components and improve them. So up to date right now, North Common Street, we've completely, we've installed the sewer line that we intended to install, a replacement sewer line. We've put in a, a new water main throughout the length of the road. And just recently, the, the drainage system has been completed on North Common Street. So by and large, all the subsurface components are now complete. We're going to be moving forward to the, the surface improvements, curbing, sidewalks, and the road itself. So we expect this to be ongoing throughout probably October, and we're going to be kind of at the mercy of the paving company as to when their availability will be to pave. But for the most part, the project will be substantially complete this fall within this paving season. So that's the, that's the project in a nutshell. I do also want to report that there was a contribution written into the grant on behalf of the town, they were going to contribute $65,000 of Chapter 90 funds. But they've been able to offset that, and I'm going to work with Jason in the Highway Department to see exactly what that number might be, because they had some excess drainage pipe that they contribute to the project, so that should lower your actual cash contribution. And at the end of the day, I, I expect, I'm thinking that we're going to come in under budget, so you'll probably hear from me again to find out what exactly you would like to do with the surplus. Right now, I'm estimating maybe there could be 40, 50,000 that we could reprogram to another eligible CDBG activity. And I had previously talked to Andrew about maybe doing a, a design or a planning project within the town with those extra funds. And if that can't happen, maybe a, a lucky resident might get a new roof or something like that with the excess funds. So available for questions, comments?
I just have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
When we spoke in the beginning of this, there was mention of each household having maybe replacing from the road water pipes into their house.
All the services.
Has anybody done that?
Taken care of, those that needed them have been assisted.
So they have, okay, because I didn't, it was a question of whether the homeowner would pick up on it or not, but it has been.
We've addressed those that needed this help.
Okay. And there was a bush problem at the beginning, like trees at all?
Still pending issue because we haven't really started the, the, the surface improvements. But you know, on the corner of Grove, there were large arborvitae's that the homeowner would like to make sure that they stay intact, and I think we're going to be able to accommodate that.
Just a couple of things I remember from the first meeting there.
Now, does this contract amendment?
So we've had a terrific resident engineer, so when we wrote the grant, we thought, you know, with this project, it was going to be really tight. So we kept costs like bare bones. One of those costs that we kept pretty tight was the amount of time the resident engineer would spend on, spend on the project. But consequently, now that we're, we're bringing this construction effort under budget, we'd like to increase the hours for that resident engineer to, to be there, watch the project, make sure it's getting constructed properly, and you know, work with your departments and the contractor efficiently. And I think it's a good use of funds, and I am recommending that we do, go ahead and increase the hours available for that resident engineer.
Is this increase going to get us to the end of the project with his supervision?
No, I told him that he should be able to tail off a little bit as we get to like the, the, the surface stuff. In other words, you know, with all the subsurface stuff done, I don't think we'll need him out there every day, but maybe just a couple days a week towards, you know, as it progresses. So I don't think we'll need to pay for full-time resident engineering moving forward, but at least get him out there a couple times a week.
Okay, so the increase is $9,500 onto the contract?
That's correct.
So I have an entertaining motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second?
Motion made, second, any discussion? Your favor?
Aye.
We've had some invoices as well, the agency, that I don't, I don't know whether they got lost in the shuffle or mixed up, but I brought them with me if you're able to address them.
I have, we signed a couple.
We have six, seven, and eight.
So we signed a few last meeting. Let me see what I got. I have eight. Six. Seven, I get them all.
Great.
Well, we signed seven, that's the one we signed on nine, four. And I think I sent a package out in the mail, you didn't get it?
I haven't gotten anything, no.
Okay. So I'll give these, these look like originals, so I'll give these to Wesley to get out to you, or do you need?
Or I could take them and scan them and send them back to you.
Okay, that's good too. So invoice number eight is in the amount of $8,355.26. And then in financial warrant number six is for $8,264.20. Having a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second?
Motion made, second, any discussion necessary? All favor?
Aye.
So what you haven't received yet is payment application number three from the contractor, Piapi Construction. It's in the hands of the engineer right now. I don't know if you have to wait until the next meeting, but I could give you the number, and maybe if the board could consider and allow the chair to sign when the actual one becomes available.
Skip one? We signed one for Piapi, is this another one?
This is number three.
It's a different one? Okay.
So the amount due to Piapi Construction is $137,433.34. Now you can wait until next meeting if you so choose, or if you're able to make a motion on approval of that, that way you can just sign when the, the actual comes, becomes available.
What was the number again?
1, 1, 3, 7, 4, 3, 3, .34.
And that's invoice number three?
Pay application number three, correct.
So I would entertain a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second?
Motion made, second, any discussion to be had? All favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll sign that when that comes in.
Anyone here from North Common? Things going okay? May I speak to this, sir? Okay, so what, what our intention is to keep the road width the same throughout the whole length of the, you know, and have no, you know, real major increase or decrease of the width. I don't know how that rumor started, I, I heard it, but it's not so. It will give the impression of narrowing in some locations because we will be introducing curbing. So curbing may give the, the, the idea that the, the width of the road might be changing because you, in some instances, you can't pull up and over the sidewalk anymore, you know? So and like I said, the subsurface infrastructure is complete now. So now we're going to move on to leveling the, the road surface with a reconstruction effort, and then it'll be followed by paving. Paving will come in, in two different series. We call the, the, the binder, will go down first, about an inch and a half or two inches of binder, then they'll let it settle in, and then they'll come back for the final. Now, as I was saying to the board, we're, we're kind of at the mercy, there's not a lot of paving contractors in the area, and they're very busy this time of the year. So they try to schedule things, you know, you know, with the other ongoing projects. So we're kind of at the mercy of the Be Palmer paving that will be coming in to do it. But, but this project will be done by, by this paving season. Is that, answer your question? Yeah, yeah, it will be done. Okay. We're, we're mainly doing what we've disturbed. So we will be doing the sidewalks, okay? And if there was something that was disturbed that was on private property, that was disturbed as part of this effort, we'll fix that. So like a little bit of the driveway aprons, maybe a little bit, but we won't be doing private walkways. We don't do private work, we're, we're doing what we disrupted as part of the public project. I'm sure Jim Piapi, he's a very, what's the term, he's a very conscientious contractor. We're very lucky to have this gentleman on this project. As you know, the hours that he puts in on this project, he's up there morning, noon, and night. I think he has direct correspondence with a lot of the neighbors up there, and I understand people are generally pretty happy with him.
I think just also, watching him at work, he's there six o'clock in the morning, goes home eight o'clock at night. Have to, you know, compliment him on that, I think, for us as residents, it would be nice if we knew the day that he was coming in. Is there a way for us to follow the project as opposed to getting it six o'clock in the morning, knocking the door and move cars? And so like, I appreciate his effort, but if there was a way for us to know, I hark in the street, I know a lot of my neighbors do, so if we know paving's coming, if you can give us 24 hours notice, we can move the vehicles so that it's not in the way of the.
Duly noted, I will make sure that between our resident engineer, Tom Newton, and Jim Piapi, I'll ask that they give advanced notice wherever possible, but by and large, the, the major, really disruptive type of construction is complete. And paving operations is like, like a day, you know? They'll come in, Palmer paving, and they'll do the whole street in like a half a day, so the bulk of it is done.
Are they grinding what's there, taking it out, or are they just going over?
I think they're doing a reconstruction effort, so they're really going to put in a new, a new surface, and they compact it, and everything.
No, but still.
It's not a reclamation, it's going to be a, a reconstruction of that road surface.
We don't want them just going over what's there either, you want it.
So they're going to take it up, and that's actually one of Jim's fortes, is, is making sure that road surface is just right, you know, in terms of compaction, and where the crown should be, and how it should actually work, you know, when the final paving goes down, so that's one of his expertise, so.
Do we know if National Grid has any digging to do there?
I don't have any correspondence with National Grid, they don't, they're not the easiest to correspond with. And we haven't had any problems, so.
No, but down the road, to check with them, because after we get this all paved and nice and smooth, they'll be coming up in two years and digging a hole.
I hope not.
Yeah. Can we ask them?
If they have any planned work? They don't like to put work in when they don't have to.
No, I know, but just, you know, they just did Mount Guyat Street, it was paved a couple of years ago, now they're going up it, same with school.
Andrew and I will look into that and see what we could dig up. Anything you want to add to this, Andrew? I don't know if the board has an inclination of the use of those funds, but I at least want to plant the seed. Andrew wrote another grant, unfortunately, that wasn't funded. They're very competitive at times, and who knows what readers you'll get and what they see in these darn applications. But part of the application included a planning study?
Yes.
Yeah. So maybe with these excess funds from this, we can maybe, maybe address part of that grant that wasn't funded.
Are there limits to what that money can be used for?
It has to be used for eligible community development block grant activities.
Okay.
Yeah, there are no eligibility constraints on these funds. It's not terribly constrictive, but it is, you know, something we have to be careful.
Is there a document on that, a PDF or something, that we could see what kind of projects are eligible? You could email to us and we could kind of?
So we do housing rehab, we can do that planning study. If there's a design project within the neighborhoods that are known to be low and moderate income, maybe something like that, we've assisted social services in the past.
Yeah, and I think what Chris is alluding to here is that, you know, having some excess money left over from this grant might be a great way to seed future applications. So if there's going to be a project done that's either a planning or design phase, then you can complete that, then you can see construction funds without having to go ahead and get a competitive grant for those planning and design funds first. So it might be a way to jumpstart future funds through this program.
Excellent, thanks. If you could email me and we'll take a look at the different things.
Okay, well, we don't know what the number will be yet until the paving's done, but I think there will be some.
Okay.
I have one question actually for you, which is in the past Wesley has led a working committee on community development, and I'm not sure what her availability is over the next few months, or if there may be one of you who would like to participate or designate someone else to lead that group. That's the group that kind of helps us identify potential projects and come back to.
Sort of like a CDBG committee?
Yeah, there's been an ad hoc advisory committee, and I know selectmen betrayed us as part of that for quite some time, so. You know, it's, I'm just looking for an indication as to whether or not I should be looking to her or looking to one of you or.
Well, she's back in the office a few hours.
Glad to hear that.
A day, so reach out to her and she'll, if she can't handle it, then she'll get one of us to do it.
Great.
Now, can I take things with me, or?
Yes.
Where can we get one of that?
Uh, the Community Development Block Grant Program is a program that's directed to municipal governments. So, you know, municipal governments can apply and, you know, it's endless, the type of things that can be done through it. It's very complicated, the question you asked, but.
Well, he's on the playground committee, elected officials that do the common, they're in charge of the common, so.
See, here's the problem with playgrounds is if the whole town uses it, we'd have to demonstrate to the state that the majority of the whole town is low to moderate income. If we could say that it's, the playground's used by a particular block group, and that block group is shown by census data to be predominantly low to moderate income, you could do that sort of thing, you know?
Yeah, I think we could probably do that, so.
Yeah, it may be tough finding block group data, but, you know, we'll check it out.
Do you think this block does fall into that category?
Where is it?
Right over here.
The baseball field where you guys.
Yeah, it's right up.
Yeah, as Chris was getting to, the trick is, you know, that if you have an asset, that's a town-wide asset, like a playground in the center of town, if there's parking there so that people can come from anywhere in town, then the state will assume that everyone in town can use it. And Northbrook Field as a community doesn't meet the income criteria for this program. So we'd have to find a location that's localized, so the benefit is just within a smaller neighborhood that meets the income eligibility criteria under this grant program. So there may be areas in town that are a good fit for this program as recreational assets, but we would have to be really careful and talk closely with the state about the common, because again, it's kind of a community-wide asset in the town. You know, in general, it's a good thing isn't meeting these income criteria, but for this grant program, it makes it harder.
We'll talk and if it fits.
And as I mentioned, there is an advisory committee that's, you know, active in bursts when there's a grant application or a new grant. And if you'd like to come and speak to us about potential projects, I'd be happy to talk.
And if anyone has questions for myself, Christopher Dunphy, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, it's four one three, seven eight one, six zero four five, at cdufpvpc.org.
Thank you.
Andrew? Uh, sure. My contacts as well, I'm Andrew Lowe, Central Mass Regional Planning. I'm at five oh eight, four five nine, three 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 nine. And everyone will spell my name wrong on email, so I won't try to get kind of like this, but if you want to give me a phone call, I'd be happy to speak.
Yeah, and I think if people are interested, they can get the number through the selectman's office also, so.
All right, thank you for the board for having us this evening.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I had a sign-in sheet somewhere. Thank you. Thanks, folks. Thank you, gentlemen.
That's what we just did. All right. So back to the agenda. Chief Smith. A little wait. I don't think there's anything else on the agenda, was any? Missed anything by anybody while the chief's in?
Who's assisting, do you see, or who's animal control? Are you doing that?
Yeah, yeah, that's. He's not here, but he's the old one that we used to have.
He's coming back?
Yeah, he's coming back to assist, because we lost one. Yeah, we did. Is, uh?
I think Darren.
Who did? Is Darren still here?
Cameron?
Yeah. Tell us about your experience in Lawrence.
In Lawrence?
Yeah.
It was a good opportunity to go up and see a lot of people working, different areas. We worked from all over, you know, the district, district had already sent up half our structural task force Friday daytime to work. They did a lot of calls, that crew was going around doing a lot of calls. And he fulfilled one of the ones, and they said they would do a lot of gas shut-offs with the gas company and stuff like that. Our group, when we went out with the other half of the district, we were basically covering Lawrence for the night with some of their guys. We worked closely with our engine on our crew, we sent six guys, myself, Catherine Marsh, or firefighter Eric Eby was our driver for the night. One, they couldn't believe we sent six guys with an engine, because a lot of the other towns sent maybe four guys, three guys, what they could get. To the fact that the lieutenant, who was what they called our pilot, said, well, do you have room in that truck for me? And I said, well, if one of my guys has to sit on somebody's lap, they will. We also had, luckily, we didn't have to do that. We had Chief Parsons, who was the leader for the whole group station with us too, so I rode with him. He gave up my seat for that lieutenant, which was a blessing, because there was no way with GPS, Google Maps, you were going to find your way around Lawrence, trying to find it and get to places quick. We all met in Auburn, then we drove to Lawrence to showcase Cinemas was the, one of the command posts. We got there and then they shipped us all to their central location to dispatches from there. We went to Bailey Street with Webster's Tower, and they had their engine, their engine nine quarters, and they were there with their crew. And of course, Chief Parsons came with us. We officially got put on duty at eight o'clock. At eight seventeen, Engine One was rolling out for a call. They were going for what we thought, because you cannot, I don't know how they understand any of the dispatches. They want to learn, they had a great dispatch system, but we could not understand a word they were saying. We thought it all was a car accident, come to find it was a fire investigation. So their first call was somebody actually had a chimnea, outdoor fire pit, on their porch going, which in the city of Lawrence is illegal, no matter what time of the year it is, let alone after all this gas problems. They had to put that out. We were, they were nice enough, they provided supper for us, we went to another station, met up with the Warren Engine, Spencer Engine. I amazingly got a phone call from a retired Lawrence Fire Chief thanking me, and I was kind of in my head going, how the heck did he get my phone number? And a little more food conversation with him, I says, you must know Joe Hallway. Oh, yeah, he gave me your number, told me to call. And having a good conversation with him to turn around and say, we gotta go. I gotta go, what do we got? Building fire. Okay, so we responded and we got there and kind of looked around going, where's this building fire? Go talk to the Lawrence Engine Nine that got there first. It was a gas investigation. So again, we don't understand how they can understand anything that's being said on their dispatchers, it's so muffled. Nothing like what we're used to out here. Good conversation. Of course, one of the first things they did tell us, who's going to Bailey Street? Oh, that's us. Okay, your trucks are going to be on the street. You're in South Lawrence. You're not really in the best part of Lawrence period. You might want to keep two guys with your trucks at all times. Okay. So that pretty much meant that I didn't really sleep all night long worrying about the truck. Webster guys didn't sleep because their cars were at least parked in front of the station, we could see all around it. Their truck was on the street, they could not see their passenger side, so if somebody walked up, decided to help themselves, they couldn't, they couldn't tell. So a few of us didn't sleep pretty much all night long. Eric was good, he slept in the truck protecting it for quite a while, along with one of the other guys, before they said to heck with it and went to some recliners and stuff like that. But we lucked out too, I felt like we were the lucky charm for them, because it was after about eleven o'clock, a few of the other departments had to go out and do a few investigations, but after about eleven, eleven-thirty, it was the first night, not only since this incident had started, but for as long as these guys could remember, they didn't have a single call all night long. So they kind of, and I kind of felt like the whole district was their lucky charm that night, so they could actually sleep for the first time. They actually had two deputies on the whole night, and one of them, they said, had not slept for forty-eight hours, and they didn't really know how he was still going. Definitely an experience to see, they do things different than we do, we do things different, it all amount of your geography. The lieutenant was kind of funny, he was actually hoping we caught a fire, because when he looked around and saw how many guys he had to work, he's like, I've never in my entire career had this many guys be able to go right up and hit a fire. He says, there's usually four, maybe five of us hitting fires, waiting for backup to come from other stations. So it was definitely fun, Chief Parsons and I had a lot to talk, the next morning it was like, never thought I'd see a Northbrook Field engine pulling out of a Lawrence station. It was fun, hope to God we never have to do it again for dealing with something like that, but we'll be there if somebody calls.
So how were you, was it all volunteers that went, or was there a group that?
It was, the call comes into Chief Hallway, when something like that comes in, they call whatever respective town's chief and said, this is what we're looking for, whether it be what's on the actual run codes for a structural or a disaster or a forest fire. They can deviate from that. And then he immediately puts out through our, I'm responding on the phone system, this is what we need, who can go? And we're lucky enough to get a lot of guys that were able to go.
They were looking for a minimum of four, we could do three if we had to, but I have in my mind who I want to send for different categories, you know, to deal with while they're metering and things like that. So I start with those phone calls and then send out the messages. And if I can make a full crew that's comfortable and safe to send up, that's what we did. If we couldn't, then we wouldn't send them. So we were more than, you know, with the staff being up to forty-five, fifty people right now, it gave us a good pool, especially being the time of day that it was, so days, weekends, all make a difference on who we get.
Well, we appreciate it, appreciate that the towns are able to send people to stuff like that, so.
That Lawrence Chief, I would laugh, and I says, call this number, he's going to get a hoot out of it. Him and I have been working together for years, Dick Shaggy was there for years, he just retired.
Oh, great. You ready, chief?
This is for? Mike, explain, I mean, that's?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did, were you going to do your reports, or did you want me to do your reports this time?
I don't know where we're going, because I know there's a change in that, if you want to. I'll take them back and I'll read it for you, I got that.
Yeah. It's while you're here.
Not going to try to fake that I can read this stuff. My high-speed two-dollar glasses on here. Good evening, monthly report for July of two thousand and eighteen. We're a little bit behind. Lieutenant Ryan Daly prepared the department's boat to be used on the holiday weekend. Once again, the boat patrol was well-received by the boaters. Lieutenant Ryan Daly attended his monthly swat in-service training. He also had a meeting with the United States Attorney's Office regarding the investigation that he initiated. His investigation, subsequent search warrant application, he was able to seize and secure high-powered weapons, silencers, ammunition that were legally possessed. He contacted the ATF and they're very interested in the case and want to prosecute it at the federal level. I put that in the report for a couple of reasons, and as I talked with the lieutenant, and I know he hates this part, but it's worth putting out there because over the years, and you've been in law enforcement, there's a lot of people that will hear things that are presented to them. And sadly enough, sometimes people will not either hear or not pay attention or not follow up on it. This was a huge case that the lieutenant decided to, when he heard what he heard, to follow up on it, rather than just dismiss what was said to him. Now, the majority of police officers absolutely all the time do the right thing, I'm not saying that part of it, but the lieutenant dug into this one. And this, as I said, subsequently ended up taking two high-powered rifles off the streets that were legally possessed as well as silencers. And again, it's just, it was outstanding work, and that's why I wanted the board and the people to know that this is the kind of work that the lieutenant has produced for our department, as well as the safety of the people in the town. Of course, I believe that was three o'clock in the morning when that started. Lieutenant was coming in to cover a shift, and it seems to always fall that way. But if it's going to hit, our department is, I've said it over and over again, our department is staffed with talent. And in this case here, it was, there was no exception. Lieutenant did an awesome job with running with that and getting those off the street. The following incidents were logged for July of two thousand and eighteen, thirty incidents, six arrests, summons, and custody issues, two civil citations, zero protection orders, one parking ticket, nine accidents, and twelve LTCs and FIDs were processed. Monthly report for August of two thousand and eighteen. Lieutenant Ryan Daly and I participated in the ILS training for the Northbrook Field School System. This training was provided to all teachers, aides, cafeteria workers, and support staff at both schools. Lieutenant Daly and I assisted the Massachusetts State Police Academy with scenario-based training that the class was going through. Graduation for, now this is a little late because they have graduated, Rich Karen and Jeff Martin was on September fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen. At ten o'clock, the graduation was at the Massachusetts State Police Academy in New Braintree. Just as a little note to put out there, I know this is a little premature, but just so you know where our graduates came in, out of a class of eighty, Rich Karen was number one ranked, and Jeff Martin was number three ranked out of eighty people in their academy. This was a tough academy, and we're going to discuss this more at the next selectman's meeting, but I can tell you that, not that I know everybody's already proud of them, but what they accomplished is huge. This was a tough academy, and to become number one and number three out of that, of the eighty that survived, I think they started with a hundred and twenty? Up in the hundred and twenty, and they earned it, so. Our boys are back, I couldn't be any more thrilled, but again, the next selectman's meeting in two weeks.
October second, I think it is?
I believe it is, a Tuesday.
Tuesday night, party?
Yes, we're going to recognize them, get them back in, just welcome them back in. They just, they've already hit the ground running and good things are going to continue to happen. Officer Jacob Deschamps has completed field training program and is clear for shift work. Officer Chris Donays has managed to provide most of the training to Officer Deschamps. Officer Ashley Joden and Officer John Laporte are now starting the field training process. I have interviewed Jesse Barad for the position of Assistant Animal Control Officer. He has held this position in Northbrook Field previously and is also resident. Officer Chris Donays, who is the primary animal control officer for Northbrook Field, recommended Mr. Barad to me. The configuration and migration of the new service in the six PCs is. The configuration and migration of the new service in the six PCs is now complete, I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee for their support of the purchase of this needed equipment. Lieutenant Ryan Daly assisted the Pan Mass Challenge by providing event security with the Semlack SWAT team for both days of the event. The following incidents were logged for August of two thousand and eighteen, we had thirty-three incidents, eight arrests, summons, custody issues, one civil citation, zero protection orders, seven accidents, and thirty-three LTC and FIDs were processed. Those are the reports, monthly reports for July and August two thousand and eighteen.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the reports.
So move, second.
I'll turn you a second, any discussion needed? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next.
Uh, we had spoke about Mr. Barad, he said, because he was a previous employee of the town, that he necessarily didn't have to show up for today. So what I'm gonna present next is Mr. Michael Splain for your consideration appointment as a part-time police officer to the North Brookfield Police Department. Mr. Splain is a resident of the town of North Brookfield since two thousand and fourteen, he's been with the North Brookfield Fire AMS, he is also with the Tri-Community YMCA in Southbridge, he's a personal trainer, fitness instructor from two thousand and thirteen to present, certified personal training instructor and group fitness instructor, also lives strong at the YMCA in Southbridge, personal trainer and fitness instructor. Since August of two thousand and fifteen to present, Mr. Splain is part of the Live Strong Certified Personal Training Instructor Program and Group Fitness Instructor for Live Strong, focused career on cancer survivors, providing a no-cost, twelve-week program for the individuals that have or had cancer. Mr. Splain is also, in two thousand and five to two thousand and nine, spent four years in United States, United States Marine Corps, uh, he was a squad leader, crew chief, E4, and a corporal. And Officer Donays has done, like he's done with every part-time police officer that we present to you, done a background check, and everything is absolutely in order, and I recommend Mr. Splain to you, the board, for your consideration to be appointed to the North Brookfield Police Department.
Yeah, but is he qualified?
He is absolutely qualified.
Okay, so I would, um, is he here? He's here, right? He's gotten, we've heard his name two or three times already tonight, so. So.
Evening.
I think we've heard quite a bit about you, is there anything else we don't know?
Hmm, yeah, it's all good.
Did you grow up in town?
No, uh, Holland and Brimfield.
Okay. And you're a resident now, or you still?
Yeah, I, I've, uh, lived here for three and a half years, about, love it, so. That's why I want to work here.
Nice. Any question?
I don't know.
Anything?
Nope.
Well, I would entertain a motion when we, uh, make the appointment.
So are we gonna appoint Michael and Jesse at the same time, or do you want to do them
Well, I, I would, uh, I would entertain a motion to do both of them, but if you were against it, I mean, Jesse's in own quantity, he's been here forever.
Oh, yeah.
We know him, and do you know him at all?
No, I don't. I do, he's, he's good.
Yeah, yeah, he's been in animal control for a long time, he's currently a dispatcher at the State Police Dispatch Center, right?
Correct.
So.
Which is tenure of almost approximately, uh, five years, who's either the animal control officer or the assistant animal control officer in North Brookfield.
Yeah, and he's been a animal control officer in a number of surrounding towns too, I think.
Correct.
Ware, Warren, something of Warren, I think, actually ran into him at Lowe's the other day, so, uh, yeah, I would entertain a motion that we approve both.
Okay. So I move to appoint Michael Splain to part-time police officer, and Jesse Barad to Assistant Animal Control Officer.
A second?
Motion may be seconded, any need for discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. All right. Hey, Chief? You got one more thing, Chief?
I do. Can I read that too?
Oh. Oh, you thought it was just gonna be me doing?
Well, no, I just, we had discussed, you know, when the transition would take place of the readings.
Yeah, it's on the agenda, so.
Okay.
Might as well, might as well hear it.
What are we doing?
Uh, the Holden Hospital Funds.
If you wanna bridge it, you can.
Yeah, just brief.
I can't.
I'll do the best I can. Chairman, Kylie and the board, I'm requesting the amount of five thousand dollars to be reserved for the North Brookfield Police Department for the purchase of updated equipment for department training from the Holden Hospital Funds. This amount also includes funding for the purchase of naloxone, Narcan, and a replacement AED. The equipment requested is to allow the proper training as per the new guidelines that will be implemented in the very near future. I have provided a printout of the request of the equipment with the cost listed, I have highlighted the equipment that I feel is essential, and the other equipment listed would enhance first responder training that we provide to the offices of this department. We have completed the process, I should say, we, the lieutenant has completed the process with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and are now licensed to possess and administer naloxone. We, uh, we now have to purchase the initial supply for the cruiser, medical bags, as well as a small quantity to have a replacement stock. The current cost for the state bid price is approximately forty dollars, the amount requested allows the department to be prepared for the opioid overdoses, as well as officer safety issues, um, where there has been inadvertent exposures to police officers and motor vehicle accidents and calls for service. This request also allows the purchase of a new Physio Control Life Pack one thousand AED to replace the aging, aging AEDs, which are currently approaching their end-of-life
Do we have the hospital funds already? Is that something we have?
I don't know when you, when you receive those, I was just trying to, uh, when they do come in, if we could earmark that, and as I said in the list, the list that I gave you, there's other stuff on it, five thousand would be essential to get what we need, to get everybody up to speed. Again, that's another, another program that the lieutenant does an exceptional job with our first responder training, so, yeah, I don't know what the other earmark for the holding funds is, but that total list, if we, I think it was like sixty-five hundred for everything, again, that gives him the ability to give the training of, of many different, more traumatic type incidents that we come across, and give him the equipment to do, to train the way he needs to train.
Yeah, I believe it's usually around fourteen thousand is my memory, is what we usually get, um, and we split it usually between, uh, fire gets some, police gets some, so, yeah, we'll take that, we'll take your list. Do you wanna, do you wanna, um, earmark five thousand now, or do you wanna wait until we see the money and split it, or?
Please, requesting it to be reserved.
Right. That's what I'm telling you, do you wanna earmark it now?
Well, when it comes out, like I said, there's, you have the whole list, if, if the potential is there to get the complete amount, like I said, I don't know what you have to do with the.
The breakdown of the monies. Five thousand is the essential part, but if we can get up to, I believe the lieutenant did all the work on this as well, uh, sixty-one ninety-nine plus four, so sixty-six hundred dollars would get us the, also the additional training equipment to train for more traumatic incidents.
So you have my copy.
Oh, I do.
So why don't we just, um, we'll look to see what we, what we do get, and we'll have your request, uh, already in hand when we look at it. Sound all right?
Yeah, it's fine.
So we'll, when we get the money, uh, or get notified, because I don't recall if we've been notified yet of what we're getting, um, I think we have, that's why fourteen thousand sticks in my head, but.
Okay.
I just want to check, and then we'll apply.
I think we've gotten, it varies every year, I think, right?
It does.
So we've gotten as low as like a ten or eleven thousand too, at some, some points.
Yeah, so that's what I'll check, like, we'll.
Perfect.
We'll match it up with your request.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, thank you.
Or do we need to do it at all?
Just tell it, do we need to do?
I don't think we need to put, say anything.
Okay.
Just so you know what I was talking about, I, I have received a concern about Halloween coming up too, that's what I was talking to them when you first called me, to see if they're gonna have something down in the roads, because they could, forget concerns about Halloween comes, how the road's gonna look.
I'll open that section.
So I tried to get them down and make sure that we do what you gotta do.
Okay.
I said, I have my first email that is asking, and legitimately so, as you, as the board knows, we have a lot of children that are in that area for Halloween.
Yeah, so, um, are you just, are you concerned about the road or the visibility, or both? The combination?
Well, I, I mean, it's the visibility, I mean, we'll have, we'll do what we can do on our end, it's right now, the road being the way it is, that was the email that I received from a resident with the question of, where's it gonna be around then, so that's what I was asking then, and they said, well, we should be, at least have a talk about.
A base?
The base come down, so that's.
Oh.
That would be fine. He also gave me an email address, I'm gonna follow up with that, just to say, we should at least get the base book down.
Yeah, so if we need any extra lights or something like that, we'll have to look into maybe a portable light station or something like that, so that if the ground's gonna be uneven or broken up, and that's a safety concern, we'll put some light towers out, so as we get closer, just, you know, be in touch with us.
We'll keep just the street.
Okay. Perfect, thanks.
We're gonna have to trunk a tree down the park this year too, so it's gonna be more contained with the common areas where people are gonna be, so those are gonna check to go one off and off common, so it helps.
Yeah.
Like we did last year, we have people, that's what we're gonna do this year again, perfect, that way it kinda keeps people from going common away from that, I mean, safe ground, common. I think the emergency management's, they have set, set up a little light.
Yes, they have.
A lot of big lights, like light of the common too, so.
I'm gonna keep.
Try to keep them away from North Common, keep them that way.
I'm gonna keep on them too, because that would help too, because it's the base called something.
Yeah. We'll help out with this, we got.
Um, I don't see any announcements, I think we got there.
Do we need Kid?
Yeah. Do you want to read that announcement?
Uh, the Hayston Library Open House in recognition of Ann Kidd, Thursday, September twentieth, six thirty to eight P.M., in the reading room, all are welcome.
Yep, so that's, uh, upon her retirement, so, uh, if you've had anything to do with the library, and you've run across her and benefited from her knowledge and assistance, um, you can go to the, the library Thursday evening, uh, to say thank you. Want to do the elections?
Sure. The state election will be Tuesday, November sixth, two thousand and eighteen, here at twenty-nine Fourth Street, the Senior Center, from seven A.M. to eight P.M. The last day to register to vote is Wednesday, October seventeenth, at the town clerk's office from nine A.M. to eight P.M. The last day to apply for an absentee ballot is Monday, November fifth, two thousand and eighteen, by twelve noon, at the town clerk's office at two fifteen North Main Street.
All right, so any, anybody have anything for us?
Public comment here?
Public comments, questions, concerns?
Well, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to say, uh, thank you guys too for all you do, I know you guys put in a ton of time, more than just the meeting series, uh, you know, you guys deserve all the recognition you get, but nobody really recognizes you guys, just want to say thank you, I think the town's heading in a good direction, I appreciate everything you're doing, and I always a hundred percent agree with everything, but, you know, I know you guys work hard and put in a lot of time, you know, with the town, the house coming along, and the rail trail, and, you know, we group up and working on with the townhouse too, and, uh, a hundred other little things that people don't realize going on, I do appreciate, uh, what you guys do.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, appreciate that. So if there's no further business, I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Few, future agenda items?
Oh, you gotta, do you want to go over them?
Uh, no, I actually, we have one.
Oh, okay, you want to add one, is that what you're saying?
A couple of months ago, we talked about the Complete Streets program.
Yes.
And we have to, we were supposed to schedule a meeting with the Highway Superintendent to discuss some of the things.
Yep.
And according to the Complete Streets program, uh, we should come up with seven or eight things to be on a list to, uh, make this program work. So I was thinking that maybe on the next selectmen's meeting, if the three of us could come up with a list of seven or eight things, uh, around the center of town or so, that we think should be priorities, we can go over those lists and come up with, uh, seven that we all agree on, and go from there.
Should we, uh, contact the Downtown Development Committee? I mean, that's kind of what they were put together for, but do you want to make priorities from the board and send it over there?
Well, it's what we, it's what we told the Complete Streets we would do, so.
Okay.
And I think they sent out an email a couple of weeks ago asking, you know, where we were at on that, so.
Okay. So you want an agenda item on the next agenda, where we'll present seven or eight things, or discuss seven or eight things?
Yeah, and they can come and talk about them too, I mean.
Yeah. Okay.
Is that for public participa- participation, for them to give us, uh?
Yeah.
Requests?
Yeah.
Suggestions?
Yeah, that, that wouldn't be a bad idea, I mean.
Well, if we, if we run down our own set of lists.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sure that the three of us aren't gonna come up with the same exact seven or eight things, so that will give everybody something to talk about.
Yeah, yeah, love a discussion. Yeah, I'll put that on the agenda, so. All right.
And then we can make sure that Highway's here too.
Yes, I'm by Highway. Any further discussion for anything, anything on the agenda?
I move to adjourn.
Second?
Motion may be seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night, all.